Ms. Scott, you want to go first?
Sure.
Okay.
So I keep all the names straight. I was asked to serve on the County Health Department's County Healthy Living, Active Living Planning Committee. The County Health Department had received a grant, and a grant to make the plan. It received no money from the city to create this plan. I want to stress that. Once their active living plan is written later this year, I hope that they will make a presentation to City Council. And I've told them that they should contact Ms. Garrett or Mr. Garza, I think, to get that straight. No, yeah, anyway. Part of the investigation that they did was bringing a gentleman to town who made a presentation on blue zones, which is sort of a healthy living type of a zone. What I want to stress is that the city was not asked for any money for bringing him in. The city has not committed any money for either the county's healthy living plan or for the potential of investigating blue zones. But that's part of where it came from. I think there's been perhaps some misunderstanding. So, first of all, I wanted to tell everyone that I have served on that committee, and secondly, that the city has not made any commitments whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I did receive some contact from some citizens who were misunderstood and thought we were going to participate in that financially, or already committed, and that's not occurred at all. So, thank you for sharing that.
That's why I thought it would be best to do it that way.
Good. Counsel, anything else? Okay. We had so much fun with budget last night, you are just in a hurry to get back to it. So, good. Okay, what we'll do then is move into Citizens Communication, and that is when anyone can come up and speak about anything whatsoever, please limit your remarks to five minutes out of courtesy to others. So now's the time. You would come to the podium and state your name and address. For the record, I see no one getting up. Oh, there's Ms. Jenny Stafford.
To mind my manners and let everybody else go first. My name is Jenny Stafford. I live at 210 Wearden, and I'm the CEO of Midcoast Family Services. I'm here because tomorrow's a big day in Midcoast world and in Victoria's world, because we have representatives from HUD coming in to visit projects that have been funded by CDBG. So I got busy and made some handouts for them, and I thought it'd probably be really nice if y'all had a hand, had them as well. And all it does is show what we have done with the CDBG money over the last four years in building the new Women's Crisis Center. I have to tell you, I'm pretty proud of the numbers. We've done more than we ever expected that we could do, and continue, and we plan to continue doing that. So they're going to look at where we've been, but I also know that on your agenda tonight, you're going to be talking about where we're going to go. And so, in the future, hopefully, another reason tomorrow's a big day, after we get an executed contract, we're going to break ground on our new office space over at the Women's Crisis Center. Now, I've heard some people say, "You're just building offices? You know, what good are offices? You need bedrooms, because we have such an overflow." Let me tell you what offices do. Offices allow us to have a place to have counseling, to have case management, to help women who are victims figure out how to do a budget, how to parent, how to apply for housing, all those critical services that they need to be able to move from our emergency shelter into permanent housing. So I thank you for considering that tonight. I want to tell you one more thing, and that is, I'm excited tomorrow, because I think HUD is going to be so pleased. I think they're going to be proud of what we've done, and that means a whole lot to me. I want to be a good steward of their money. It's big money that we got from them, and so it's important. But I also want you to be proud of us. I want this to be a place that you can look to and say, you know, "We've done, we've done good now, and it's going to stand up for year after year after year." But more important than making you happy and making HUD happy is, my goal is to have a place that victims can feel safe and protected and welcome for years to come. I'd like to leave these handouts with you, for you to look at at your convenience. Thank you for this opportunity to partner with you.
Citizens Communication is still open, so now's the time. If you want to come speak to City Council, come forward, please. Okay, seeing no one, we're going to close Citizens Communication, and we'll move into ordinances. We do have two ordinances. Both have a public hearing, and we'll have a public hearing on each one separately. So, Mr. City Attorney?
First, Item C1 is an ordinance replacing Article III of the Victoria City Code to revise and update regulations pertaining to itinerant vendors, solicitors, outdoor sales, and mobile food vendors, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for publication, enforcement, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing on that ordinance specifically. If anyone wants to speak just to that item, now would be the time. Food truck ordinance, excuse me. This is, yes, Mr. Cantor, if you want to talk about the food truck ordinance, please do so.
Hello? I just wanted to thank each and every one of you for the opportunity to be able to work on the legislation for the, for the food truck vending industry here. It's a very unique opportunity, and it's going to help, I think, a lot of families earn a good living here in town and help a burgeoning industry progress. So, thank you very much. It was a pleasure to deal or work with the city government, and I think that's how government should work. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, James. And for the record, your name and address, would you state it?
James Cantor. It's 318 Paco Road.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate what you do, too, Mr. Cantor.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, so, public hearing is still open on that item. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing on C1, and I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, entertain a motion. Do we adopt?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Now, there's an amendment, I understand?
Yes, sir.
There's, I think, just a typo on page nine. The paragraph under the first five on the page, it says it's an affirmative, oops, it's an affirmative defense to prosecution under this section 1460A. And I think it should be fourteen, I'm sorry, it says 1461. It should be 1460A5 instead of 1461A6. So I make the motion that we adopt, that we amend the ordinance in that way.
Where is it? I haven't followed.
Page nine.
Page nine.
Nine of 11. Page nine of 11.
Nine of 11, and then there's a paragraph inset after number five.
All about four paragraphs.
And that paragraph inset after the first number five, it says, "It is an affirmative defense to prosecution" under this subsection. Do you see that, Mr. Alvarez?
Yes, sir. I mean, excuse me, yes, ma'am.
Sorry.
So you're changing that to 146, what?
1460A5.
1460A5. It's a reference to this particular provision itself.
Okay.
Do we have to amend it first before we vote?
We need a second.
I second the motion.
Okay. And that's just a clerical change, so.
Yes.
Let's, let's vote on that real quick, because I would assume no one have a problem with that. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Those opposed? Okay, that, the amendment passed. Now, before we vote, I just want to thank Mr. Jalapaska and Ms. Scott for also working as our council representatives with this group, and so appreciate that. And I would remind, I think some people came in late that are also part of the food truck group. Am I right? Okay. We had the public hearing and closed it already for speakers, and so we're going to vote on it. But I will say that we have a additional reading at our next meeting. You know, like if someone looked it over and thought about it and said, "Oh, we need to change one more little thing," you still can at the next meeting. So there'll be another opportunity there. Mr. Jalapaska, did you?
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the food truck operators. It was a pleasure dealing with them. Perhaps we walked into that first meeting with different ideas than we walked out, and I think that was mutually advantageous to everyone there. And this is how things are supposed to work here. Absolutely correct. It was a pleasure working with y'all.
So, Mr. Jalapaska didn't wear y'all out, I guess. So, that's good. That's good. Also, while we're on the topic, I would like to ask staff to start to put together, I guess, part two would be a ordinance or set of guidelines regarding a food truck park. Is that what you would call it? Whatever we need to do to put something together with the rules and whatever they need to do, if y'all come up with something, and then at the right time, maybe Mr. Gush can contact these guys, and then y'all can look it over and discuss it.
Absolutely.
And, you know, that could take a number of months, but we'll go through the same way y'all, we did this one, so.
And I was just told by James that we have perhaps three parks that are being under consideration at this time.
Okay.
And so that's a very positive note. So it might be over to move a little sooner than later, if that is the case. I did have one person contacted me about that very issue, and I asked him to contact Mr. Gush. I don't know if they did or not.
I have talked to a couple of people, so you may have.
Okay. And, and so it would seem that we need to get something in order so that we'll have a good level surface to stand on there.
Good, you're good. Okay, so we've amended it properly. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
I have some questions.
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to break it up, starting with page three of 11, Section D. Have we, do we know what the amount will be for the background check?
We're working on fees right now with the goal of having fees back to council the second meeting in July. Anybody that has currently paid a fee in 2016 will not be required to pay an additional fee this year.
Because what concerns me is that for that particular type of vendor, they only, they have to, I guess, renew every six months?
Yes. You're on the, under the itinerant vendor.
Itinerant, yes.
Yes, yes, sir. It renews every.
So are they going to have to pay every six months?
Yes, sir. They will. Mm-hmm.
Well, that really concerns me.
I think the old ordinance was 90 days. I think the, it was a 90-day permit.
I mean, that background check ought to be good for at least a year. You're going to make them go every six months?
That's the plan.
And we don't even know what the fee is yet.
Yes, sir. That's the plan.
Okay. Because what I saw, the street vendors are a little bit different. They go annually. That's page five. The street vendors, they pull their permit from January to December. I don't see any accommodation for a prorata. In other words, if they come in the middle of the year.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
So they're going to have to pay for a full year, even though they're only six months?
Yes, sir.
Into, into that, into the year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then moving on to...
And I'm sure Ms. Swoboda can tell you what the fees are. I just don't know them off the top of my head.
Now, we just moved.
The current ones.
Into the mobile food vendors and units, specifically...
And Ms. Alvarez, let me correct myself. I thought you were talking about the food vendors on the permit. That's the permit I was talking about. We currently have fees set up for itinerant vendors. Ms. Swoboda, would you tell them what that is?
Correct. Currently, the itinerant vendors permit is the $40 background check fee and $80 permit for the permit itself. And that currently is a 90-day permit.
So we are increasing it by six months?
We're increasing it to six months, yes, sir.
We're actually doing away with the commercial outdoor sales and just having an itinerant vendor.
But they have to pay twice a year?
Yes. Currently, the itinerant vendors have to, if they're going to come in, they have to come in every 90 days and do the background and the permit fee. That's the current ordinance.
Yes, sir. I thought you were referring to the food truck permit.
I'm going down.
Okay.
Now we're at the food trucks.
Okay.
Page nine, B2. Would somebody please explain to me that language and why it's necessary?
Which subsection?
Page nine, B2.
At least once.
Because at the request of the food truck vendors, we have some that have derelict trucks up on blocks, and they don't think that's positive for their industry. And it was at their request that we do this. Normal operations of a food truck would be that you stay for your period of time day or whatever, but then you have to go and restock. They don't have a lot of storage space on them necessarily, unless you had a trailer behind your food truck, you know, you have it have storage for your food. So typically, they would go to Sam's or whatever, or wherever, and restock with the things that they needed and be ready for the next day. And so they didn't feel like the derelict truck that's been in the same place up on blocks for six months should be included in this. It felt like it was negative for their industry.
Mr. Jalapaska, if I could expand on that answer a little bit as well. The Texas Food Establishment Regulations require that mobile food units return to a home base every night, and there was some clarification done between the last draft that you've seen and this draft, where it was determined that if a mobile food unit has all of the necessary equipment on the trailer, it can be its own commissary. And so it is not required to return back to its home base every night. But staff, as well as the food truck industry, felt it was important that we include an element in there that requires the trucks to move for exactly the reason Mr. Jalapaska's describing, because it helps make it more easy to enforce the regulation against those mobile food truck, trailers that aren't mobile, that have set up in a location and simply stay there.
Well, I've observed where there's trailers that are there for days on end. I don't know what happens in the middle of the night with them, but they're, they seem to be pretty stationary. They're not sitting on blocks, they're sitting on tires. So I'm assuming they, they, they move eventually and relocate. But what you're now saying here with this section, they're going to have to move every night.
Now, a multi-day event, like Boot Fest.
Multi-day event, being an exception.
I'm not talking about those.
Okay.
I'm talking about just your regular trailers that are out there all over the community
parked in different locations that seem to be there for a number of days or weeks, and then eventually they move on to another location, maybe.
Well, that's a code enforcement issue then now, right?
Well, exactly. My point is this. So what you mean by move, so they can sit there and move an inch, and they've moved?
That wouldn't be with the spirit of the law, but sure. And that, people do that kind of stuff, unfortunately.
We used to do it all the time downtown when we had, we paid for the meters, right?
And part of the ordinance talks about has to be in a state of mobile readiness. So I believe that for those that have flat tires and up on blocks, that will also address some of that.
It was an image issue for the industry. They are all good operators, trying their best to preserve good stuff to the public, and they felt like there were some derelict operators in amongst their midst. They would like to clean up their image and look better. I think that's a lofty goal.
Also, this provision is under B, and B is entitled Mobile Food Vendor Operation Requirements. So if you're thinking about a truck that's in its home station and plugged in for power and so forth, that's not what this section is dealing with. And I'm not sure if that's part of what your concern is.
I, I just, then I see units that are parked, and they're obviously there for longer periods of time. Can't define that. But now, what you're saying, every day, they're going to have to move with this section. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Are we talking about two different types of mobile trucks? Because you have in your description a fixed location where you go and get a permit, and then you ask for the owner to write a letter and let you have permission to put your mobile unit there, whether you move it or not, but it's for six months. So to me, that's a fixed location. Are they going to be part of that requirement for the mobile food vendor operation requirement?
Ma'am, I think the fixed location for six months that you're talking about may actually be in the itinerant vendor section, not in the mobile food truck section. I know it's confusing. We've got a lot of different things moving around in this one.
Well, because of the definitions that you gave at the beginning, I was trying to see if it was two different types of mobile units that we're talking about. We're talking something that's permanent and something that's mobile, correct?
There are, yes. Yes, we are talking about different types of sales, because if, if someone sets up a booth in front of Walmart, with Walmart's permission, they could be an itinerant vendor in that location without being a food unit.
But somebody could be a fixed location that goes and gets permission from the vendor, I mean, from the property owner, and then he's there whether he moves for six months or whether he's there for six months every single night?
Let me see if I understand your question correctly. Are you asking whether a mobile food unit can get permission from a property owner and then simply park and stay in front?
Yes.
The answer to that is no.
Okay. So what is the difference between that and then the fixed location? You're having the same type of truck. That's what's confusing, is you basically have the same kind of truck that's selling food, right?
I mean, itinerant vendors are not food sales. If someone is selling food from a temporary location like a truck or a trailer, they're a mobile food unit. They're not an itinerant vendor.
But you still can get permission to get a food truck with, to operate in a property that belongs to somebody else, provided that you get the letter from the owner?
That's correct. And then you can stay in that location as long as you move at least once during a 24-hour period.
You can leave and come back the next day.
Yeah, I know some of them do, but there's some that don't. So, well, how do?
Yes, ma'am. And in the situation you're describing, some of them who don't, that's part of what is being targeted by this ordinance, is to eliminate some of those practices and make sure that mobile food units really are mobile.
Have the ordinance for food truck parks, that may be a little bit different in situations like that. I envision that the trucks may be parked there.
I think one of the things that also that needs to be done, provided that, you know, this needs to be translated, and it needs to be told to the people that have mobile units that do not speak English. Somebody needs to go and educate them, okay? So, I'm saying educate before you go out and issue warrants or tickets or, I see that you have three warnings, or one warning and then, you know, the rest, but that has to be done, because we do have a lot of those people do not speak English. They're not going to understand, so we need to educate them.
Two more, Mary.
Look at the last page.
No rush. Page 11. Because this, this is the first chance we've had to look at this since the committee met. Page 10, number 19. The trailer that sits here on, I guess it's Bridge and Constitution in the parking lot?
First Prosperity Bank property.
Across, yeah, the Prosperity Bank parking lot.
Yes, sir.
Is that applicable to that, that, that number 19?
No, sir. It's my understanding that that's operating within a parking lot and not on a public street. This number 19 is only...
That would not, that would not fall under being in the downtown business district?
That's right. Number 19 there, mobile units operating on a public street within the downtown business district, is, is an exception to the general rule that a food truck cannot operate on the street for the downtown business district if they have written permission from the city manager.
Saying that they can.
Back to the, the unit that's over here.
No, sir.
The one that's parked in the parking lot, I believe, you're saying it's Prosperity Bank.
It's on the parking lot of Prosperity Bank.
And so that's just like parking on any other private property.
They would need to comply with having permission from the property owner and that stipulation. Yes, sir.
And still have to move every 24 hours?
Yes, ma'am, they do. And they pretty much do. I, I, since I drive the street every day, I'd see them at lunch, and then they're gone.
And then just the last one, which is, I guess it's okay after looking at it again, but it's page 11, C, under compliance. So, city manager has the final authority administratively to suspend and revoke the food vendor permit for the violations, and the, and the, there's a first, second, third violation, and then I guess the fourth one where they have to come back in three months. Is that, in other words, is this, you have the final say, there's no other appeal, there's no other opportunity to take this beyond this compliance?
Well, I always operate under the basis that anybody can appeal anything to you guys that I do. So I'm, I'm sure that you can always go to the council as a whole and ask for, you know, you know, a decision point.
That's all I had, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And as I said earlier, there'll be a second, third reading. We typically combine those at our next meeting, should there be any tweaks or changes needed.
Well, the only thing is I request that some part be translated, okay?
Yeah. Don't we do that with all of them online?
No, no.
I thought that Unicode or, okay.
No.
No worries.
We'll, we'll work on that. I appreciate it. Ms. Solis.
I still believe we're giving the food truck industry what they requested. This is not to be a burdensome thing, it's to be helpful for their industry. And so while we might agree or disagree on the moving of the truck every 24 hours, it was at their request.
You have the minutes for that, indicating that?
I'm saying...
Did y'all keep minutes indicating that, that transaction, that conversation?
Aye.
No? Okay, thank you.
I want to throw in, though, that, because when I went into the meeting, I was concerned about the requirement of moving 24 hours, and by the time I finished listening, I agree with Mr. Jalapaska, and there were a lot of food truck owners that had been communicated with before our meeting, and it was like that's part of what having a food truck is all about. So I was very comfortable with it at that point.
Very good. All right, well, thank y'all. Good discussion. So I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. All right, we're going to move to C, number two.
Item C2 is an ordinance granting to Centerpoint Energy Resources Corporation doing businesses at Centerpoint Energy Texas Gas Operations. The right privilege and franchise to construct, install, withstand, remove, replace, abandon, operate, and maintain its facilities within the public rights of Wagona City, Victoria, Texas for the transportation, delivery, sale, and distribution of natural gas, containing provisions relating to the foregoing subject, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This is the second and not the third reading of this ordinance. We will have a separate third reading on a subsequent date.
Okay. So let's open the public hearing on C2. Anyone who would like to speak to that item only, please come forward now. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing on C2, and I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, adopt C2.
Make a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
What is the current rate that they're paying on their grocery receipts? Still 4%? Has that been changed? They're paying 2%? So it's going up? Okay.
Now, that, that begs the question about after the five years and the automatic renewal. At 4% or is that going to be negotiated? I thought I saw some language that there's going to be opportunity for negotiation at one point. Is that correct?
Mutual.
Right?
That's correct.
Because you're asking for two automatic five-year extensions, so this thing can go as long as 15 years.
That's right. 15 years is the limit within the charter.
So I would hope at every five-year interval, there'll be opportunity to adjust the rates?
Yes, sir. That was the request of staff, that we include a five-year, an opportunity to examine that rate earlier, since the rate's changing. We want to make sure that it's still going to be appropriate.
Yes. Thank you.
And the fee for the gas, does it go up or down, or does that one stay seven cents for the reimbursement on the gas?
On the transport gas?
Uh-huh.
During the court term of this contract, I believe it'll stay the same.
Is it all? Oh, there it is.
Yeah, whatever the number is, that stays for the next five years.
Five years.
And that's negotiable too, or not?
Five years, but it has to be a mutual consent, and others have to agree too.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, item passes. We have four items on the consent agenda.
The four items on the consent agenda will be approved with a single vote. They are, first, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from June 7, 2016. Second, a resolution appointing three board members to the Victoria Health Facilities Development Corporation and declaring an effective date. Third, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Tetra Tech Incorporated for the purpose of debris monitoring in the event of disaster and declaring an effective date. And fourth, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to accept a 2016 EMS local projects grant from the Texas Department of State Health Services in the amount of $6,011.50 for the purpose of protective gear and other emergency medical services equipment used by the Victoria Fire Department and declaring an effective date.
Second.
A motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, okay, item, they all pass. Resolution, E1.
Item E1 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to create a trusted agency account for the purpose of receiving donations towards the construction of a splash pad at Ethelie Tracy Park to accept donations for this project as may be received from time to time and declaring an effective date.
Will we adopt E1?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, are there any questions?
To state that I'm going to abstain due to a conflict of interest.
I may make a few statements if you're kind of probably wondering where the splash pad's coming from. It's something that's kind of out in that five-year horizon. And in the past, we've been successful seeking foundation grants to help pay for some improvements out at Ethelie Tracy. So, I thought maybe this would be an opportunity to try to reach out to some of the foundations locally to see if there's an interest, and this will give us an area to park the money. They can only be used for the splash pad from those foundations. And so, over the next few years, see if we can get some grant money to help us pay for a splash pad. And that's kind of the next logical place to do a splash pad, and it will give us splash pads throughout the community, the north, the central, and the south part, so.
Very good.
Did we set up a similar account for dog park?
We have not.
I brought that up too.
If you would like us to, we'll be glad to bring back a resolution to do that.
Maybe a little might help, I don't know.
Sure.
Why don't we talk later about it? Because there's, yeah, I've been kind of nudging that issue slowly.
There's just not, right now, there's just not an active group that's out there to try to solicit and raise money to help pay for a dog park.
I've encouraged some people in the private sector to do so, but I had the same idea. We might need to set one of these up at some point to slowly collect money. Yes, sir, exactly.
Wasn't there an interest that wanted to contribute dollar for dollar?
Yes, sir, we have a foundation, and they're still interested. I spoke with one of the board members the other day just to see if they're still interested. It's a match, they're willing to match whatever the.
How much do we know?
We have maybe $2,000?
No, I'm sorry. How much are they willing, what's their cap?
$150,000 was their cap a little over a year ago.
So, if the city wanted to put $150,000, I'm just, it's just a, we could get, we could pick up that 150.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
And it would be at 300 and ready to go.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
There were efforts, you might ask Kobe exactly what the status of that was, to raise some money. I'm not sure how far they've gotten, perhaps they have stalled.
I can, Kobe doesn't have to get up, I can answer that question. There's not a movement right now. There was a group, Parks Commissioners, that worked on it for a while, they did one event, and that's, so, anyway.
Well, we can maybe discuss it more at a later date. Okay. All right, so we have, do we have a motion in a second?
Yes, we do.
We do, all right. Very good. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, and one abstention. All right, E2.
Item E2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a community development block grant programmatic agreement with Midcoast Family Services of Victoria, Texas regarding a public facilities construction project for an additional standalone building using the amount of $125,000 and declaring an effective date.
Will we adopt E2?
We have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Mrs. Stafford is here, and she's already addressed this, thank you, Jenny. Okay, very good. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you. All right, no city managers report, we'll go straight into our budget work session.
Yes, and continuing from last night, we have two presentations tonight. Cheryl Marthel-Johnny, the Human Resources Director, and then Gilbert. And Cheryl's going to go first. And you have your hand out already at your place, so.
Mayor, city council members, I'm here tonight to present to you the Human Resources Budget Workshop material. What I plan to go over briefly is just a review of our first full-time budgeted personnel numbers, as well as some vacancy information, and including some current vacancy numbers for you. And then recommendations associated with our pay program, which you heard last night as well. So, from, this from James, I'm sorry. Full-time personnel numbers, as you can see, we've got three fiscal years' worth of data in front of you. Again, as a reminder from last night's presentations, we are not recommending adding any new positions, new full-time headcount adds to fiscal year 17. So, we will recommend staying at 621 full-time personnel going forward, which is currently where we're at for fiscal year 16. Also, just for vacant positions, to give you an idea of where we've been and where we're headed on our vacancies, you've got, again, three years' worth of fiscal year data. And this chart, I know it's quite busy, but it just shows some data points. Really, what's important is what's in sort of your captions. Fiscal year 14, we had, on average, 49 vacant positions within the city of Victoria. And fiscal year 15, that average dropped down by 10 to 39 vacancies. So, a lot of work by every single department with regards to filling those vacant positions. Also, the market then started to made a play in fiscal year 16, as well as the hard work by every department to fill those vacant positions. And currently, we're sitting at an average of 23 vacant positions. To give a better picture of what's going on currently, as of Monday, here are our current number of vacant positions within each department. In Environmental Services, we have one vacant position. Parks and Rec, we have three. Police, we have licensed officers at five vacant, total of eight. And I know this is a different number than what Chief Craig shared with you last night, and it really has to do with just timing. I think Chief Craig was a few weeks ahead of, and this is as of Monday. Plus, HR doesn't count them until we have them on the books and they sign the paperwork. But there has been some offers made, which I think is what Chief Craig's numbers included as well. But nonetheless, from an HR standpoint, we have eight vacancies. Licensed officers, we have five, and I think Chief Craig had six on there, which included a resignation that we received yesterday, which wasn't reflected in these numbers. Fire, as you heard last night, was fully staffed. We also have a hiring pool with fire. We move forward with the fire department and their efforts with regards to hiring and then staffing up a pool. We have four people currently on that pool, so if we have a vacancy, we make a call. And as long as they're still interested in that position, we can hopefully get them in pretty quickly, so. And last I heard, all of them are eager to come to work for the city of Victoria. Public Works, we have six vacant current positions, and then all other departments, we have six, which totals are 24 total.
Because this is a new day, yesterday, we talked at length about the openings in the police department, and a lot of us were trying to figure out what caused that. And one of the things that was mentioned was a lot of the officers are leaving for being closer to family, family obligations. It doesn't really reflect badly on the city when you're aware of that. And since this is a new day, and we have new people watching, I wondered if you agreed with that or could expand on that?
Well, I can expand on it some, and I can bring back some additional data, too, that breaks that down even further. But just to give you an idea of just some reasons associated with PD in particular, for about two years, so starting fiscal year October 1 of 2014 up to current, we've had total PD positions. So, that includes licensed as well as certified and non-certified. So, officers as well as our clerk positions and 911 operators. We've had 20 vacancies, people leaving. Out of that, we've had a total of about nine leaving for better job opportunities. So, that tells me that they're leaving for whatever that might look like. The rest are a mix of family obligations, moving from the area, going back to school. Some are resignations, some are terminations, retirements, and so a mix of all those. But I'll be glad to bring back some more detail on that attrition and the reasons for the leaves.
I appreciate it mostly. I wanted to, you know, for the sake of folks that are watching that might not have heard the discussion that we had yesterday.
Yes, ma'am, I appreciate you asking. So, as we reviewed last night, we are not recommending a pay program for fiscal year 17, and that is due to projected revenues, which I know Gilbert will get into on the finance presentation. But to give you a point of reference from a pay history standpoint, in 2015, we did offer a pay-for-performance, and that was average for the city at 3%. As well as we offered a step plan for police and fire for those positions that are included in the step plan, and that included an average 3% increase. So, we had both of those pay programs, 3% pay-for-performance for general population and some certain leadership positions within police and fire, and then the 3% step for police and fire certified position. In 2016, we came back around, and we offered an across-the-board 3% for the city. In addition to that, we had a 3% step program. And for PD and fire, we also had a 2.5% market adjustment for certain positions that we felt needed, more your licensed positions within that. So, on average, police and fire, anywhere from about 5.5 to 6% increase last year, and the city population, 3%. So, real briefly, my conclusion is, I want to highlight the fact that even though it's a tough times in our economy, and our pay program reflects that with regards to our revenues being down, we still offer a very stable workforce. What we're not recommending to you tonight is hiring freezes or cutting back personnel. You know, a lot of folks are paying close attention to us as an employer of choice, which we've been pushing out for several years now. And that's reflective, I think, in our vacancy numbers that you're seeing. But stability, you know, we have a job, we're still hiring for those vacancies of 24 positions. We do value our employees and their contributions that they make every day. We cannot complete enhancing livability as our logo with regards to the community services without valuing what they have and contribute day in and day out. We also offer a respectful work environment for our employees. They enjoy coming to work for the most part, right? Some days are tougher than others, as we all can probably agree to. But for the most part, I think the city of Victoria's image is a great place to work, and people who work here emulate that as well, so. Any questions?
When are we going to talk about insurance?
August. We need, you may remember, we changed to a new network in January. And so, we felt like we needed more than four months' worth of data to come forth with some good data. So, we'll be able to talk about health insurance and.
So, no heads up at this point?
No, sir, no, sir.
Thank you.
Won't be fun.
Well, you know, there's advantages to being self-funded. You know, we're not having to build in a profit margin for, you know. So, there's advantages to being that, and we have a healthy reserve in the health fund, which is good, so.
We're making some strides toward our network for some network savings and those kind of things, too. So, decisions that we've made hopefully will be there for us. Any other questions, then?
Just remarks, you know, your slide with the pay history for 2015 and 2016, that 3% in 2015, and anyone can answer this roughly, what did that cost?
Well, the total pay program for the pay-for-performance and step in 15 was probably close to $1 million for all funds, or $900,000 for all funds for the pay program? Gilbert's going to give me an exact number.
No, I'm hesitant because you threw all funds in there.
I did, for all.
I'll pass, I can't, I can tell a general fund on top of my head.
75% of it's going to be general fund.
2015, I can tell a general fund, it was about, close to about $600,000. So, you might want to add another 200, 300,000 on top of that, you look close to that.
900 to a million, like you said.
2016, just.
Hold on, hold on. That's, let me, the amount is a lot. Okay, that's my, my point is, and then in 2016, that same amount had to be present in the budget. And we, again, in 2016, did another 3%, which was another.
Well, the 3%, the step and the market together, that's about 750, 780.
Of additional recurring revenue, which is, again, in our next year's current, excuse me, our next year's budget. So, I say, I make these remarks for the public, you know, because it's a sensitive subject. I'm sure all seven of us up here would love to give everybody a, I know I would, love to give them all that raise, let the city manager, let them work that out. But when we do, we have to remember, that's got to be there next year again. So, we're committing money in perpetuity for years on end, and that's something that we must take very serious. And I hope most employees know that we can't spend money we don't have. You can imagine going to them next year and saying, oh, we got to cut your pay, we don't have it. I mean, we certainly couldn't borrow money to pay salaries, right? So, that's just something that people need to understand. It's, I know staff, and I know Charmel, I would venture to say, really is frustrated that we can't do something this year, you know, and that goes for myself. So, I just want to make that very clear and for the benefit of the public, that every time we do that, we got, that's got to be there next year as well.
If I'm mayor, and not, maybe city manager, I'm thinking about it. But in addition to that, the pay, we also added staff last year. So, just for the general fund, so if you were looking at $1.2 million in increase in pay program overall, staffing and pay. So, last year was a big, large chunk.
That was police department.
Police, and we had fire, too, a little bit, too, yeah.
Well, and on top of the step, you had a market adjustment. So, you really had an across-the-board, your step, and a market adjustment was part of your pay program.
It was quite a bit last year, yeah. And it really personally bothers me that we can't do the market adjustment, at least right now. This budget's not done yet, but we can't spend money we don't have. We have to be responsible, so I know we're doing the best we can.
May I ask a couple of questions since we've opened up that subject?
Sure.
Pay-for-performance in 2015. It was a 3, up to a 3%. Now, not necessarily all staff could receive that.
I think it was up to 5%, a 4, okay.
Average 3.
Was it 4? Average was 3%. But not all staff. In other words, whatever you budgeted, even if you budgeted the total 4%, not because it was a pay-for-performance, some may have gotten 0, some may have gotten 1, and up to 4%. Is that correct? So, we don't know.
I think it's 4, she corrected.
I don't know that number. Well, I don't know if we were ever showed, shared that number at the end, maybe at the.
But it's easy to, Cheryl's got the data, we can easily provide that, so.
I can tell you, on average, it was roughly about 3%, but you're correct. The range for pay-for-performance was 0 to 4%. So, some could have gotten a 4%, where others could have gotten a 0 or a 1%. But on average, our budget included the 3%. I'm sorry, Gilbert.
No, fine, you answered. Our budget included 3%, but after it does settle, we kind of hit that market, that target, around the 3.
On average, on average.
Your total estimate, and I ask for your total estimate, and that's, you stand by that. I mean, I'm not sure what your point is.
That was what was put in the budget, yeah.
Right, so.
Well, I guess my point is, I'd like to see, just like we got the comparison last year of what we could do with a 3% across the board, or a 1% across the board. We're not being shown any of those options. Maybe we will be in Gilbert's presentation.
No, sir, when we, since we're not proposing a pay program, there's, but we can tell you a 1%, what a 1% average pay would cost us. I mean, we can easily, I think it's, 1% is going to run, what about?
We've kind of put the cart from the front of the horse a little bit, because, again, I don't know what the revenues are, or what we're projecting for revenue.
Well, and that's what Gilbert's fixing to go over in just a few minutes. Yes, sir.
Well, we're going to, no pay raise because no revenues.
Well, I guess it's because it's my responsibility to present a budget, and that's what I'm doing. So, and that's why we do this early in July, June, as I mentioned last night. So, if you wish to do a course correction or change on what I'm presenting, it's a great opportunity to have that conversation. So, no, sir, that's, this whole purpose of work session is so you, I get feedback from what you wish to do, so.
That's the only topic, did anybody else have?
On pay program.
Do you want that now?
No, we can bring that back.
I have that, but just, I mean, we can talk about, do you mind budgeting, we can talk about it now, it's up to y'all.
Well, I guess we got to get over the sticker shock of whatever we're anticipating in revenues, because.
Well, I think, I think we go through that process, like Ms. Charmel was saying, then we go through the budget process and presentation, and then at the end, we can just start throwing numbers out there. But I think you're going to need to realize, on the revenue side, what you're dealing with first.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is your story?
This is my story.
Do you have enough? I'm good. I've got mine. We're good. They didn't change it.
Okay, yeah.
Go ahead.
Just to make sure. All right. All right, as every budget season, I always have a disclaimer. And just like an attorney, that's like, there's a lot of things I want to just qualify before we move on, is that the 2017 budget is still a work in progress. Last night, General Fund Department's presented a budget, and they have certain numbers. And I guarantee, you probably take that numbers and go look at my number, hey, this doesn't jive, it will not jive. Those numbers were given to them back in May of 6, May 6 of this year. Since then, I've been tweaking, adjusting payroll, fuel accounts, looking at the market and everything else, internal charges. So, there's going to be a slight difference, but then. So, there's going to be a slight difference, but the overall budget is not going to change much. So, it's just a caveat on that. Second of all...
Or let me also too, their major projects aren't changing. No, those one-time projects, those are not, you're talking more like the payroll accounts and those accounts.
Yeah, I'm talking about if you're going to look at the payroll account, why this fluctuate. So, it's payroll adjustments, I'm still looking at those. What I mean by that is that the actual pay is this, last year's budget was this. I'm reconciling, bringing it down. Fuel, you know that, it's going up and down. I'm just trying to lock in something for another year. So, I got a crystal ball working overtime right now. And internal charges, I'm still working on that. We got a workman's comp fund that we still need to look at, and still got some claims out there. I still want to be comfortable with that. So, that's a moving target. Not only that, I got the 2016 expenses that I'm going to lock in towards the end of June, towards the beginning of July. That's where I'm going to lock in those numbers so that fund balance at the beginning, at the ending, that's going to be beginning next year, it's going to fluctuate for the meantime. And of course, on July the 25th, I get the certified road. The number I have in here is my best guess with the information the appraisals have given me as of June the 3rd, which is about three weeks ago. I plan to look at it again at the end of June, about another couple of weeks in July. So, hopefully by July 25th, it doesn't have that much movement at all in the budget, okay? And of course, the city manager will present a budget that's balanced, at least where revenues exceed expenses. Any questions? Perfect. Let's talk about the outline real quick. I know y'all went through this last year. So, if I get this look like move on, Gilbert, I'd be happy to move on. First of all, I want to present the all-inclusive budget. What do I mean by that? All-inclusive budget is like a turnkey. See, I told you I was going to use it. Where includes one-time expenses, new programs, everything. What's that bottom line new number? And then we're going to go back and dissect that budget and take out the one-time, take out the new programs, and come back to a baseline budget. Baseline budget comparison to last year's baseline, where you set a tax rate on that number. Does that make sense? Then we come back and talk about, okay, here are the new programs we're offering this year. Make sure council is okay with that. There ain't a lot. Then we come back, talk about the one-time expenses, and then we talk about the revenues, which is going to be interesting. And I'll bring it all together and talk about the fund balance, what it's going to look like, what I'm projecting, okay? So, let's start off. For 2017, we're looking at a 51-point million-dollar budget. I don't get to see anything here, no. That's okay, I got, that's fine. Sorry. I know I have glasses, but they ain't that powerful. Public works. What I mean by public works, we're dealing with fire, police, and municipal court. I'm dealing with services. I'm not dealing with each department by itself, so I'm grouping them by services, okay? Public works, 53% of the budget. I mean, sorry, public safety. Public, I saw the look. Public works, public works, street traffic engineering. That's 21% of budget. You got parks, 7%. General administrative, okay? You have the city manager, you got legal, you got finance, HR. You got city secretary, you got public information, and building services that's in that number. Development service, 5%. That's Jared's departments, planning, GIS, inspection, court enforcement, development administration. Library services, 4% of the budget. None departmental, as you remember, that's department that everything doesn't fit in. These departments go in there. Like, for example, funding for the zoo, funding for the Victoria County Appraisal District, tax office, things like that, insurance, okay? Now, comparing the 15, the 17 to the 16 year, we're looking at all-inclusive, of course. We're looking at $898,000 decrease. Of course, majority of the services went down with exceptional case of a public works. They went up. Main reason there because we increased in our funding for our CIP program for 2017. Parks went down drastically because we had, of course, that new building in there. So, we got $898,000 comparison from an all-inclusive to this year's budget proposal. And comparing that to last year, public safety, let me get my notes because I'm going a little faster than I thought it was. Overall, comparing Apple's, Apple's all-inclusive went down by $94,000. Basically, fuel costs, less vehicles. And we have a communication department that we have internal charges for radio services overhead. That went down. So, majority is there. Public work services, fuel, less vehicles. And the reason why it went up, $1 million, because we increased in our transfer account to construction fund. And I'll explain that more for our CIP projects, okay? Parks recreation went down by 1.6 basically because you have that building coming out. General administrator went down by $150,000, where you don't have a council election next year, that's $50,000. You have salaries survey in there, that's about $25,000. Legal payroll went down a little bit. And we have less building improvements in general administrator this year than last year. When I'm talking to 17, 16, of course. Development service went down as a net $66,000. Your payroll went up, but the reason why is a negative because you had that GIs upgrade of $115,000. That's because of that. Library overall went up by only 4,000, but put it all together, we have a little more, we buy a little bit more books than last year. Basically, that's what's happening there. None departmental went down by $40,000. Remember last year, we put $40,000 in there for the zoo. That's a one-time expense as a match. That's that number.
Gilbert, let me pause just a second. On development services, I want to make sure they understand, that's not software. That was the, doing the aerials and the planometrics.
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, it's the aerials.
It's not software.
Not, not, not any software, Mr. Bultknight.
I was looking at him, making sure. I was looking at him.
That was also a match with the county. Did we do something with the county?
The appraisal district. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, what caused the increase of $898,000? Well, in order to answer that question, you have to dissect the budget. You got to understand what's your one-time, you got to understand what's the new programs, and you got to understand what is that baseline number. So, you can have an apple, apple comparison. So, let's do that. All right. The all-inclusive budget overall, as I mentioned earlier, went down $898,000. Let's take out one-time expenses for both years. Now, you got recurring expenses, what's going to normally happen on average year to year. 2017 was 48.3, 2016, 48.4. So, overall, we went down by $142,000. That's about 0.3% decrease, okay? Now, but to get it down to a baseline, we need to take out some new recurring expenses. That's $100,000. Now, you're looking at a baseline compared to last year, what the tax rate was set on. Last year was 48.4, and this year, we're looking at 48.2. So, overall, you had a $241,000 decrease, half a percent. Does this make sense to y'all? Where I'm going with this, because I'm trying to bring it down to a comparison level. Yes, ma'am?
Slow down for a minute, let my brain catch up.
No, absolutely. We got all your time you want.
The new recurring expenses, have, have you told us what those are?
I have not told you that.
Are you going to?
I will tell you that.
Okay. Now, my brain's caught up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I want to jump in, talk briefly what that $241,000 is made up of. Public safety, 147. I'm not going to tell you what the items are because I have another slide. Y'all probably looking already ahead of time. I'm going, I don't spend more time on that slide than this slide. Public works, increase baseline to baseline 50,000. Parking wreck, $106,000 decrease. General administrated, $94,000 decrease as a net. Development services, $50,000 increase. Library, 5,000. None departmental, 1,000 negative. Overall, that's your total $242,000 decrease by departmental service. But the next slide, we're going to look at it by category. Okay, what exactly by category, personnel, MNO, and capital, what's happening, okay? Well, basically, on public safety, like I said, we had $147,000 decrease. The main reason, of course, you can see at MNO site there, it's $151,000. Well, that's because of your full, the fuel, as I mentioned. Less vehicles being purchased than last year, and that communication overhead, internal charges has decreased. That's the majority effect right there, the $151,000. Public works, okay, this, bear with me on this one. This is more a little accounting thing going on here. In 2016, the current year budget, we're in right now, we budgeted all the street infrastructure in a capital account, okay? What I'm proposing for the 2017 budget, I'm budgeting that street program in a transfer account to transfer the money to a construction fund. Why are you doing that, Gilbert? I'll tell you. During the CIP, we had several different sources of funds. We got sales types coming in, we got CO bonds coming in, general fund and water. It's a nightmare. So, logically, you like to put it in a separate, one centralized fund, where you can bring in the revenue and capture the expenses all in one area. You keep track of the resources worth getting, but you also keep track of the expenses. And that's the construction fund. We've done this before. It just sticks out like a sore thumb now because we did it different last year. The other way is that you have expenses in general fund, you have expenses in water, and it's like, okay, I got to go go all over the place to add up what this cost is. So, the idea from an accounting standpoint, centralize your expenses, bring in your revenue. You still account for all your revenue, but you have a centralized expense. That's all that's happening there, folks. So, basically, my capital went down and my transfer went up. But if you look at it, both of them, it kind of nets it out. Does that make sense? Thank you. Parks recreation overall went down by 106,000. Basically, the MNO, $93,000. We had a decrease in contract labor section, okay? General administrative, basically on the payroll side, we got about 26,000. In the 2016 budget, we put extra funding in there for legal department because, remember Linda retired? We had some overlapping funding when she had time to train for the new attorney come in, so there's extra funding there. Well, we don't have that funding in 2017. That goes away. The MNO, $65,000. Basically, what that reduction is due, again, is because we don't have an election next year. That's $50,000. Personnel, I mean, professional service went down a little bit, and that's it. Development services overall went up by $51,000. As you recall, on the personnel side especially, Jared mentioned yesterday, we have reduction in CDVG payroll subsidy. General fund's picking up the rest. Does that make sense? That's that increase. Library overall, $5,000 increase. It's mainly on the capital side. None departmental, negative $1,000. And overall, we had 241. That explains that where personnel went up by 27,000. MNO went up by 2.5. Capital went down by 2.8. Again, that's because we budgeted in a different account. One's the MNO count, the other's the capital. But overall, it's $241,000 or $242 compared from a baseline last year to this. That's where we're starting from. Any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Because my brain can keep four digits easier than five digits, I'm seeing that with the library, on the baseline that you're presenting, you're showing 5,221 is a change. But a couple of slides ago on the library, again, because I can remember four digits better than five, library was shown as 3861. Is that because?
One-time expenses.
All-inclusive, there was a, another deduction that's not being considered?
Correct, you got, you got to consider the one-time expenses, library. If you take those like, take that out for both years, you come back to this number. That's the difference.
Okay, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
No, no problem. Those are good questions. Please, keep going. I'm moving on if you don't know other questions. All right. Here's the question, here's the answer to your question, Ms. Scott. The new program, the only program, one program, okay, that's enough. Tech stop. We have additional program to add five additional tech stop mowings on Loop 463. Kobe was up here yesterday, was showing you a graph where he's going to increase his mowing. Currently, right now, tech stop does three mowings, free of charge. What we like to do is five extra mowings, but it's going to cost us to do them. That's $100,000. So, before, I showed you a baseline of 3.1. If we add that 100, now you got a new revised baseline of 3.2. As I mentioned earlier, it went down by 106. We had the 100, now it's only down by 6,000. Does that make sense? Any comment?
Well, it does. And you'll notice that his budget's staying pretty flat, and we're adding that 100,000. It's because he reduced predominantly, I think, contract labor went down. And so, it's really a net, it's a wash. Yes, ma'am?
Can I ask about the contract labor? What, what's changed? Why are we getting away with it?
Kobe can explain it better, but I can tell you one thing with our equipment and the way he's deploying his manpower, it's just more efficient.
Another thing you got to consider, I'll let Toby ask you, but...
You know, I tried so hard. I tried so hard.
What did you say, Gilbert?
No, I won't say that. I'm trying so hard. Focus. You got to understand, when Kobe came in, you know, he came into a new operation. And he's, and a new manager would come in and look at the operation, and he's going to work with what he has now, and then modify and adjust and adapt down the road. He has done a great job of that. So, I won't add any more of that, but the point, what you're seeing here is adjustment, adaption to what he's actually services, cut-down thing, being more efficient, and the mowing equipment.
Kobe, you want to add?
Appreciate you, Gil.
Hey, you're welcome.
I might get my thoughts here together now. When we first came in, we were heavily relying on labor ready. And we use labor ready to, to help us on a, on a contract basis. And so, one of the goals over the first three years was to decrease that by 10% each time. And so, when we started this current year, I tasked our crew leaders and my superintendent to drag, to drop that down to just bare minimum. And so, that's what we've done is, is the majority of that is, is us not using labor ready on a daily basis, just when we need to. We changed our weekend mowing, weekend crew. We added four people to a weekend crew that go through Riverside and all of our parks and pick up trash, and so that on Monday, I'm not bringing in 10 labor readies to pick up Riverside all at once. We do it throughout the week instead of just on Monday. So, that's where it's come from.
You need to talk a little bit about your equipment because you've purchased some equipment that has allowed you to be more efficient in your mowing.
Yes, we've, you know, the first year I was here, we, we purchased two 11-foot deck mowers. We purchased some, some larger fine-cut mowers. And you see in my budget this year, I'm, I'm adding another two. And those are all done to, you know, increase efficiencies, whether a 60-foot or 60-inch deck mower versus an 11-foot mower that we can use. And so, that's what we're trying to do, is become faster and still provide a better cut.
So, that 106,000 is roughly what labor ready expenses?
Majority of it, yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, now, what we're going to go out for bid to mow the state's property along 463. Now, they, and I'm not asking a question necessarily. It's, it's classified as a rural stretch, but we're, which used to get how many mowings a year?
It, it was classified as a rural, which got two mowings a year. We're now classified as an urban that gets three mowings a year.
We've, we've asked them, please do that, so we get three.
Yes.
Now, there was some problems with their contractor just literally not doing their work, and I don't think they knew it.
That was on the landscaping side, not necessarily the mowing side, so...
Okay, of course, the public just puts that all together. But so, this is for five mowings if we need them. Of course, it could, we could go into drought and not need all five, right? But it's 20, you're budgeting $20,000 to mow that entire stretch is what you would expect roughly.
Yes, I'm going to request five mowings. I want to, I want eight throughout the year to, to get to the level that I feel that we need to. I believe we need eight minimum.
Does that include any weed eating around signs and edges and stuff?
No, that is just when the, when you see the tractors come in. It's, it's, well, they will, I want to reset it. The landscaped areas would not be additional because right now, they're supposed to do those once a month. The landscaped areas would not be additional, because right now, they're supposed to do those once a month. It would do, like, we just got finished with the mowings, and they will weed eat around the guard rails and, and those things. So that would include, yes, sir, it would, would include that. Sorry.
Do you know about how many acreage that includes, that whole span? I'm just curious.
I had it on my slide yesterday. I, I'd have to get that back to you, Mr. Mayor.
You had the map. I didn't know what the acreage was. It's just, the reason I'm bringing this up is because the, it's a common, it's very visible. It's, the public often communicates to me about it, probably Mr. Halpaska or anybody on that side of town. And, you know, I want them to understand that, yeah, that's state property that we're having to spend local money on. And, you know, it's frustrating, it needs to be kept maintaining well, up well. I trust you'll do that, but I wish we, they would do it. Anyway, that's for another day to debate.
This is the, the property that you showed on the slide in red, that this is along Loop four sixty three?
Yes, ma'am.
Not the entire stretch, but quite a bit of it?
No, it is entire, from city limits to city limits.
Okay.
And, and that contract will be one that we will be able to piggyback the state contracts, so we'll be able to use the same contractor with them. Is that not correct, Ms. Garrett? I'm sorry?
I think, I think that's, I think that was the information we were given, but recently, I don't, I don't know if that's an accurate statement. We're gonna have to explore that. So.
I guess my thought on. Or my question on thought on that was, how do we make sure that they get coordinated so we don't have two mowings in one week and then don't have it for months?
Oh, yeah, no, there's, there's no doubt. We'll know when they're scheduled. Tech Dot, we will communicate with the Tech Dot District, not the regional office here, and that we'll know.
Mr. Alvarez?
The area office, I'm saying, regional.
Just a couple of quick observations that concern me, by taking on this additional task. We don't have to, we're just doing it, we're compelled to because of citizens' complaints, is that what I'm understanding? Because there are other right-of-way incidents, scenarios in this community that go neglected. Right-of-ways that belong to the railroad, for example, that don't get mowed. City right-of-ways that take a while to get to. But yet, we're gonna put this on, on top of everything else that, that the parks has to maintain.
We'll contract this out, so it won't be staffed.
It will be contracted?
Yes, yes, sir, it will not be staffed doing it, we'll contract it.
But I will caution, there are certainly plenty of other right-of-ways we could bring to the table, including railroad right-of-ways.
Yes, sir, we, we have.
That are neglected.
I'm sorry, we've tried to do code enforcement on the railroads. I'm gonna smile because it doesn't work, and they have forbid us from going onto their property, and so, it's, it's.
Why don't we just send them a bill or find them?
We did that.
We've tried that.
We've tried that too.
Yes, sir, they're the railroad.
Well, I mean.
And they, it does look bad. I mean, it's, it's no doubt it looks bad.
What, what, how are we gonna compel Tech Dot to take care of their right-of-ways? Oh, we're gonna go pay for extra?
Yes, sir, whatever program they have in the state, they only do three a year for us. And several years ago, when, and I can't recall the date, but when they got away from mowing, you know, they just notified the communities, this is, this is all we're doing, you can choose to do it if you want to or not. And we don't have to do it, but it, it goes back to the aesthetics of the community and, you know, trying to have a nice-looking community.
The number of yearly mowings for, by Tech Dot hasn't changed in a bunch of years, has it?
Well, it, it, we went from two to three, and that's because they had us classified as a rural. And once we had a conversation with Tech Dot and realized we should be classified as a urban center, that's when we went up one.
But in the county, it's been two mowings a year, whether we needed it or not, along Tech Dot right-of-way, since I was much younger. And, and that hasn't changed. They have always had that attitude. So in dry years, two was adequate, in rainy years, it looked like the devil, it was still two per year. So I'm not sure that has changed, other than our classification, but that has been Tech Dot's style for a long time.
Well, I would just argue that the aesthetics of the community apply across the community. And there are just some other parts of the community that I see that go neglected from maintenance of right-of-ways and, and even city right-of-ways.
Traffic counts are so high there.
A dilemma, because is it the property owner, is it the city, you know, but it, it just should be across the board, across the community.
All you need to do is bring a list of staff. I mean, it can be.
Well, we need to find the money for it, right, Mayor?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, where were we?
Is there any more questions about the mowing and the one hundred thousand? Turn it back over to Gilbert.
Thanks, Kobe. Keep on going, Will.
Thanks. I, I wanna jump into the one-time expenses. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time, but I might briefly go through it, but not detail too much. For the two thousand and seventeen, we're looking at about a two-point-eight million dollar one-time expense programs. Fire Department, two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. I'm not gonna read every one, I'll, I'll let y'all take time to look at it. Police Department, sixty-three thousand. PIO Building, fifteen hundred dollars. Okay? Street Department, one point five million dollars. Basically, the majority of that, for example, the Tanglewood, Twin Ninety, Residential Street, those are the CIP funding. Engineering, fifteen hundred dollars, Building Services, twenty-seven hundred. It says AC equipment, but mainly those are big pumps. Traffic Department, seventy-four thousand. Parking wreck, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Library, twenty-seven thousand. None departmental, five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars for the YMCA slash city pool project, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, our last payment. EPE, yeah. Also allocated by service programs, you know, Public Works, of course, is the biggest bulk of it all because of CIP, fifty-six thousand. None departmental, that's the CIP, and everything else, self-explanatory. Any questions? I know I went through that real kind of quick, trying to save some time here.
Well, most of these were discussed last night, when the departments discussed their budgets.
Correct.
How old is that mowing equipment for the parks?
Kobe?
Didn't we just buy some mowing equipment?
Yes, sir.
Spreading it out.
Are we replacing or adding?
We're replacing the, the zero-turn mowers, and then we are adding two additional eleven-foot deck mowers.
And the ones we're replacing are how old?
They'll be three years old.
Three plus?
When this time comes without them purchasing, yes.
Remember about two?
Yes, sir, I just, it's.
They're under contract, aren't they?
No, we purchased them with cash, with cash payment. It's just, you, you know, it's replacing them on a cycle, so we don't get to the point where we're, we're down mowers and not being able to use them more than we are using them.
Very good, thank you.
And some of these numbers are, these are general fund numbers, or are these all numbers?
Strictly general fund numbers.
Strictly general fund.
Okay. I'm gonna bring it back together. I dissected, sliced, and diced, and put it back together. Last year, we started with a two thousand and sixteen baseline budget, where you set a tax rate of about forty-eight point four million dollars, okay? We went through the budget process, and we've realized that we had a net cost reduction, right now, two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, which now brings to a new baseline for two thousand and seventeen at forty-eight point two million dollars. Okay? We add the new programs, a hundred thousand dollars, we add back the one-time expenses. Of course, now we're back to the fifty-one point one million dollars we started with earlier. Does that make sense? The whole principle behind this practice or work, or whatever you wanna call it, is to show council that really, where, where we're lean as can possibly be, and we have them cut back, not because we want it, it just happened to be that way, fuel, for example, went down. And we're not adding a lot of projects, just one. Any other questions on the expense side? Because I'm gonna move on to the revenue side, that's where the fun starts. Okay? On the revenue, for two thousand and seventeen, we're looking at, currently, right now, today, and it's gonna change, I guarantee you that, we're looking at about forty-eight point five million dollars in revenue. Sales tax makes up about thirty-six point two. Property taxes, right now, with the assumption played in, is about thirty-one point two percent. Franchise tax, eleven point four. Just to refresh you, franchise tax is, for example, you did Center Point. Sudden Link is another one we get money from, Waste Management, Republic from the landfill, those are the franchise tax. Other financing sources, those basically are transferring from other funds, water, environmental. That's seven point three percent of the total revenue budget. Charges for service ambulance, it's equates about three point eight percent. The county fire contract, one point six percent. Forfeiture fund, basically municipal court revenue, that's what that is, two point seven percent. License and permits, various different type of license and permits, for example, building permits, one point nine. Intergovernor, intergovernmental revenue, basically what that is, the primary one is like sales tax corporation pays the city X dollars to manage and, and their, their contracts and everything else. That's in that number. That makes up about one percent. Then you have charges for services, for example, PD escorts, calls, false alarms, stuff like that. Then you got miscellaneous account, nothing fits in the other one, that goes there. As you can see, property and sales tax is the biggest revenue. Sales tax is about the only one up that is pretty volatile. The other ones are pretty stable. Property tax is pretty stable because you have a tax rate established to it. The other ones, you gotta fee. The only thing variable about it is usage, how many people are gonna really do it. But the biggest part of, that moves up here is that sales tax. Once that goes a certain way, something's gonna look bad or good. In this case, it doesn't look that good. Let's come do some comparison here, from last year to this year. Sales tax, right now, as of today, now, a couple of slides, I might be qualifying my comments, but right now, we're looking at about a half a million dollars in reduction from last year. Okay? Property taxes, we're looking right now with the assumptions, with the tax rate and appraised values, at three hundred and forty-five thousand. Caveat, that three forty-five is basically from new improvements, okay? Franchise is down by seventy-one thousand, basically, Sudden Link franchise is down. Waste Management franchise is down, mainly due to the fact that you have a lot of these industry, like Pioneer. All that waste went away, so that count kind of went away. Other financing sources, eighty-eight thousand dollars, basically what that is, again, is the transfers. And salvage sales of assets, old assets. Ambulance, sixteen thousand increase, county fire, I can count all that, I'm being zero. Fine and forfeiture, variables of twenty thousand negative, licensed permits at fourteen thousand. Licensed permits, the reason why it's up is because our liquor license somehow has increased, I guess, during bad times, he can count on liquor license being up. Internal government, it's down by forty-nine thousand. Basically, what you have there, as you recall, we change, or we have new concession stand, not owners, but.
Vendors.
Vendors, and contract was redone, and of course, you have a lower rent, if you have a lower rent, you got less money coming in. That's net effect. Charges for other services, eighty-two, that's basically like I was saying, the escort fees, everything else like that. Miscellaneous, basically, that's, I adjusted that up because over the past couple of years, we've been trending upwards, so I increased that one. So we're up about forty thousand dollars there. But overall, when you put it all together, you're looking at a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in the red. Okay? Any questions? We can talk about the assumption, now I'm playing to the sales tax and the property tax in a minute, but I wanna make sure you're comfortable with the numbers. It's kind of dumb, but maybe not, but that's what it is right now. Let's talk about sales tax, favorite topic. All right. The red line is your actual, the green, the green, or kind of green, is your my projection over the years. The blue line is your original budget, and there's a little dot, black little dot, that's a three-year moving average. The red one is a five-year moving average, okay? Keep in mind, we're looking at eighteen years of data here, okay? Right now, and I will qualify this in a minute, the budget has about seventeen point six projected for this year. I'm assuming, I'm assuming the same type of level next year, seventeen point six, and I will explain that why in a minute. Now, that's, of course, is variance about half a million dollars, right now, it stands at about a three percent reduction. If you look at the black dotted line and the red dotted line, it's kind of angling towards that area. It's not telling you that's what it's gonna be, but at least the history's showing that's the direction it's going. That's one reason why I'm comfortable with that right now. The second thing, if you're a history buff, and you like, you think history will repeat itself, like, I, I believe it does. Right now, from thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, we're in our fourth year, seventeen's gonna be our fifth year, depends how you add that up. Every five years, that's why I have these lines, every five years, something happens. Like, for example, the first five years, it was kind of flat, you had a little plateau there. Next year, we had the big boom, then you had a recession from the oh-eight, oh-nine, and ten, and then you had the Eagle Ford shell, okay? My gut feeling, and I'm a qualified, I'm not an economist, which is my, you know, after reading everything and everything, all the articles, and see what's going around, which I think was gonna happen from, it's what we experienced in nineteen ninety-nine to twenty, to two thousand and three. It's not gonna have that high pitch, it's gonna be like this. Flat. Does that make sense to y'all? So it's gonna level that out big time. I was reading the Wall Street Journal this morning, and it had that quote down there, "US is prone to a period of specular stagnation." I was like, what? Basically, what it says, it's gonna be flat. But of course, live it to a Harvard professor, and that's what they're translating as what's gonna happen in, in the short and long run. I mean, by short and long, we're looking two or three years. After seven years from what we had before, and you think that's gonna change, you know, but it hasn't. But that's where we at right now, folks. I, I don't think it's gonna get any prettier, but the good news is, is not taking a dive. Okay? So I think the city's still in good shape yet. The next slide, what I have here is that I'm gonna focus on just two thousand and sixteen. The blue line is the budget. The red line is the actual. As you can see, October, November, December, we've been tracking along just fine and dandy. But in May, I had a twenty-two percent drop. And I, I was like, I, I can't explain that. I mean, I got all these months going pretty good. And I knew some, I would have some variance, and I knew Paul's gonna be right eventually, but I didn't think a twenty-two percent drop. So what I, I guess what I'm saying is that I hope some of that twenty-two percent drop is maybe some audit adjustments that pertains to prior months, that we don't have that much drop in one year in actual sales tax. That's what I'm banking on right now. But moving forward, I went out to the Federal Reserve of dollars, and they have surveys out there on retail, they do that every month. They're not too happy, but their sentiment's real, it doesn't look good, folks. So for right now, when I started this developing the budget, I had a three percent drop. That's about the, that's a five hundred thousand dollars drop. But I wanna look at it again in July, that's, I get my ninth payment in July. I'm expecting maybe another little drop. That's my gut feeling right now. How much? Two to three hundred, possible. You got a global economy of two point four percent, you got US economy of two percent. Physical policy is uncertain right now, you got the politics, look at there. Fuel prices creeping up slowly, slowly. Healthcare costs, up. Wages, weak. Commodity, food, milk, all that, gone up. All that sums up to consumer being very low, confident. So I think next year, we're, we're not gonna, I guess, bottom line, what I'm trying to say, whatever number we're gonna hit, I think we're gonna hit in two thousand and sixteen, you expect that number in two thousand and seventeen, that's what I'm, we're gonna budget it at. I don't see any growth. I can't, you know, what about a recession? Well, there's a level, you know, you can read all the articles you want, economists and all that, it's, it's low. Is it possible? Yes. But I'm just gambling that it stays flat. Makes sense? Any questions, comments?
I got a question for you on your May figure. Is that really for sales and April?
That's one month transaction, it's not my three months.
No, but it's your.
Yeah. The payment in June is for May transaction, and hopefully, I'm counting on there's some adjustment there that for, for prior months. That they made a mistake or did something.
January is actually, December's sales Christmas, but it's showing up in January, and that's their tradition of the way they report it, they show it when they get it. But that's not the sale for the month of January. That maybe be a disclaimer that might clarify for some.
Trying to figure out what happened in April.
Well, you find out, let me.
The wine, you know?
I'm sorry.
I just have a quick question. On this drop in the sales, because it's reflecting April's sales, okay? If I have a business where I collect the sales tax, I may do the report, but I don't pay the sales tax because I don't have the money, so that's gonna affect your report, because you're basing it on the collection. So that's gonna affect your report, because you're basing it on the collections, not necessarily the sales.
That drop in May was paid in June. So the people who made the reports in May, they paid it in June, I get the money in June.
Understand, but if, if I do a report and I don't have the money to pay it.
Oh, you mean, you, you, okay, well, that.
Yeah, yeah, that's gonna affect it.
Yeah, some people and I have the money, you send the report, they get a penalty, yeah, sure, that can happen, sure.
Yeah, and it's a reflection of what the economy is doing. It's not selling as much, and the people that do sell something may not be able to pay, so, you know, they could be behind in their sales tax. Hopefully, they'll catch up.
Yeah. I don't have the privilege to see the data to detail that, but that's possible.
Mayor, I had a couple of observations.
Yes, sir.
I mean, you're, in your report, your analysis that we get every month, the curve is there. It follows, you know, that May is always gonna take a dip. It just, this one was drastic compared to the last five years. Now, City Manager, what are we doing, because that's affecting this current budget? What are we starting to look at as far as putting the brakes on some, any projects or anything?
No, sir, we haven't had to. I mean, we're, we're okay. I mean, we've got, throughout the year, you have some payroll savings, uh, because of vacancies and.
We, I was gonna say, we do have, management does have a backup plan, just in case it goes worse than three.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, but, but we'll get into that in a minute. That's, that's my future slides.
Yeah, but we haven't had to do anything right now.
But right now, we're good.
We're okay, and I think a lot of it has to do with your payroll savings. I mean, uh, now, you know, we've got some construction projects that have come in a little lower budget, but, um, we're okay right now.
Yes, thank you.
My concern is that we may be looking at projects to let or put out for bid or award bid that, but the remainder of this fiscal year that we may, or may not wanna.
And, and we kinda, I know some of the, I know especially in parks, I, you know, asked him to hold back during the spring when we were trying to see what was gonna happen, so. But I think we're okay right now.
Thank you. That's correct. But to, and, and this went off, but anyway. But, uh, we're keeping an eye on upcoming projects too, you know? It's not like we're just ignoring it, but right now, we're, we're, we're pretty steady.
We were, you know, it would be good, some of us were here back, when was that, ten? We were down over two million dollars in sales tax. It's on your graph. Now, we're down, what, four hundred and whatever it is, eighty thousand, so, yeah, we, we made it through.
Yeah.
Well, and we froze positions back then, certain positions. We, we did not freeze any public safety positions, but, uh, other positions we froze during that time period. I think at one point, we probably had twenty-three, twenty-four positions frozen. And then, uh, when you go back and look at your personnel counts and you see that we're pretty stable, some of those that we froze back in that time, we decided to eliminate because we realized when we made some changes with efficiencies, we didn't need those, so.
Let me show you this graph, it's kinda, kinda bring it more together here. I have eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. You can see, these are actual, this is the level. If I'm thinking about seventeen five, it kinda resembling the twelve and thirteen year. My current feeling, you know, we might be looking at a possible of seventeen point three. If you compare twenty fifteen to what I think twenty sixteen, that's about a seven hundred thousand dollar drop, okay? If you go back to oh-nine and ten, when the recession eventually affected the city of Victoria, happened in a way, but takes always a lag, that was a million dollar drop in sale tax. Okay? Bottom line, what I'm saying is that I can't equate what's happening now to the same level of what's, what happened back in that recession, because that was more than a recession, okay? So I think we might, I know, I feel confident we're gonna be okay. Does that make sense to y'all?
And two, you know, we always, we are that regional, regional hub for medical and retail, and, and this plays into that importance of us continuing to be that regional hub, and, uh, you know, it plays a factor.
U of H, when are they gonna start their, their construction? Do we know?
Later this year?
This fiscal year for us, or this year?
I'm not sure. Uh, I don't know, they don't have to submit plans to us, uh.
We're not hearing when they might break around?
Well, I know Dr. Morgan talked this morning about his projects, but I don't think he gave us a date on breaking ground, so, um.
Because once that is introduced into the economy with contractors and construction work.
Yes, sir.
You're gonna see, I hope, you're gonna see some activity, economic activity that's gonna help a lot.
Absolutely, so.
Gilbert, your projection between now and the end of the fiscal year sixteen, is that at three percent?
Right now, the way the number stands is three percent reduction, it's a half a million dollars. But I think, um, I'm not gonna do anything until I get my July receipt. But if my gut feeling comes incorrect, I might have to adjust it again. They end up being close to a four point six, four point five. That'd be close to seven hundred thousand, there'll be another three hundred, so total close to seven, eight hundred thousand dollars. But I'm gonna wait to July to make that judgment call.
And we can withstand that?
I'm sorry?
Everybody think it stays the same?
If we take another hit like we did for May, we will have to make some adjustments.
If we hit that seven hundred, eight hundred thousand shortfall?
I think we can have a, we have a backup plan, where I'm gonna, I get, I get into in a minute. But as Ms. Garrett mentioned, if we're looking at twenty-two percent.
Yeah, I mean.
All bets are off, we'll have to relook at everything again. Does that make sense? It's a bit qualifying statement. Okay, let's move on. Tax rate, yeah, baby. All right, before I start, I wanna make sure everybody understands something. Appraised values. If you do, I apologize, but I'm gonna say it anyway. The appraised values of city get, it's a net number that's, it's composition from houses, commercial, real estate, personal, real estate, commercial, mineral. What I mean by mineral is that any type of industry or related item related to the oil, gas industry is considered a mineral, okay? That has a valuation. I want you to keep that in mind when you look at these values dollars, okay? Because that plays into the situation. Reason I'm saying this, because if, once I show it, you, you have it there, you can look at it. But the point is, there's gonna be a lot of talks, well, my house went up three, four, five percent. I don't explain how the city taxing, tax rate went up. Basically, the net appraisal values had an increase of point nine nine. That's as of June the third, the numbers I got from John, okay? They're starting to make sense to me, but that's as of June. So the overall net, when you throw every component together, it's only point nine nine. Within, that means that we had, if you take that number compared to last year's certified number, we had a thirty-seven million dollar, thirty-seven million dollar increase, okay? Point two. Within that thirty-seven million dollars, you have seventy-seven new construction values. Why am I saying that? Because when you do the effective tax rate, to come up with what's that rate's gonna be, you have to extract that seventy-seven million dollars out of the total valuation. What that translates into is that your actual values compared to last year's values went down as a net. I'm not saying houses, I'm not saying particular industry, but as a net, it went down to a negative. Does that make sense? This is, this is per their numbers as of June. I'm gonna visit again in Ju, at the end of the month, and again in July, so. But usually, when you have that type number kinda set, you got about, right now, you got about, as of June, you had six hundred million protest values. What that means is that that six hundred million is the old value from last year. The new value is around seven or eight hundred million. So the likelihood of that number increasing is very slim. Usually, it stays the same. If it does, it's moving on the same line, so. And I don't see it moving drastically, I don't see, unless they didn't bet a huge error there and they gave me the wrong report. But that's the numbers I have right now. With that said, the proposed tax rate that we're looking at right now, again, it's a proposed. Don't focus on is that it's fixed, it's gonna be this number, it's a proposed. We still got a few weeks and a month, something like that, to adjust this. We're looking at a tax rate of thirty-two eighty-five for the M and O side. If you compare that to last year, that's zero point two oh percent, less than a half a cent, hardly nothing. Debt tax rate, now that's a little different. That's twenty-five point nine one, that's an increase of one penny, point four five cents. Well, you compare that to last year's tax rate of fifty-seven eleven, it's an overall increase from last year of one point six five cents. This budget assumes a bond issue of seven point two million dollars. It assumes zero bond capacity issue. During the CIP, we were talking about issuing two million dollars, because our debt capacity, if it came in around three percent growth, it didn't hit that. So management's proposing zero capacity. But in here, if council still wish, we're still going forward with the seven point two million dollar bond issue for Woodway, Bridle Ridge slash Saddle Brook subdivisions, okay? You take that, the effective tax rate right now, the, the numbers, it's fifty-seven point three seven. Of course, the proposed tax rate, again, proposed, is greater than the effective tax rate by one point three nine. And guess why? Seven point two million dollar bond issue. Roback tax per the city ordinance is sixty point three five. Of course, we way down compared to the roback per city ordinance, about one point five nine cents. If you do the state law require, if you go by the state law, we're down by two point five seven based on the law's calculation. Keep in mind, any tax rate that's above the fifty-seven point eleven, if any individual who has frozen properties would not see that increase. They'll continue paying whatever they're paying right now. They won't, their total gross payment will not go up. Keep that in mind. Does that make sense?
Can you explain the debt issue, uh, the bond issue again?
Yeah, I got, I have this, this table, it's kinda, I like this one better. All right, as I mentioned earlier, M and O, we're proposing a thirty-two point eight five cents. Last year was thirty-two point six five. We have an increase of about zero point two oh cents, okay? Hardly anything there. The old debt, what I mean by old debt is the debt we have right now on the books that we, no new debt, just what we're servicing right now. That make sense? What we have now. What costs us twenty-four point five two compared to last year, twenty-four, four, six, it went up by point zero six cents. About nine, translated about nineteen thousand dollars. Reason why, because the appraisal went down. Okay? Any question how, how you read those two numbers? Now, new debt. The new debt is what's coming onboard, seven point two million dollars. During the CIP, we talked about proposing to issue some new bond to pay for Woodway, Bridle Ridge, Saddle Brook subdivision, street improvements. Okay? To service debt, sorry?
Is it COs or what are we talking?
COs.
COs, right?
Absolutely, COs. To service that debt, you're looking at an annual payment of about five hundred and nineteen thousand, roughly a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year to service that debt service, twenty years, straight line. That cost is, is a doll, I mean, one point three nine cents in order to service that debt. So basically, issue debt, one point three nine, okay? So you got a total tax rate of fifty-eight point seven six compared to last year, fifty-seven, of course, at that one sixty-five increase. Now, let's throw in the effective tax rate. The effective tax rate right now with the current numbers is fifty-seven point three seven. Last year's effective tax rate is fifty-six point five two. Guess what? We had an increase in effective tax rate because the appraisals went down compared to last year. That validates that logic. That make sense? So you have a higher effective tax rate. I see the look. When appraisal values go up, you have an inverse relationship with effective tax rates go down. If the appraisals go down, effective tax rates go up. It's a math calculation, it was set by the state, don't ask me to explain more than that. Does that make sense? The whole logic behind it is that, as you well know, the effective tax rate would generate the same amount of money that you had previous year, correct? Based on those values. Well, if your values went down, guess what? You have to increase the effective tax rate to generate the, the same level of values you did last year, even though it went down. I know it's hard to understand, well, it should've worked that way, it should be in my benefit, but it doesn't necessarily go work that every year. So, uh, as I've been here, I think this is the second or third time. That's about it.
You know, the breakdown between the Woodway, Bridle Ridge, and Saddle Brook project.
That's the dollars?
Yes, yes, sir, we do, they're about split even.
Yeah, you got, Woodway's three point six, that one's three point five.
Yeah, I got it right here, three, six, seven for Woodway and three, five, thirty for the other one.
Bridle Ridge and Saddle Brook were on the five-year CIP?
We presented it since April, yes. And we showed that, that we would, uh, probably be recommending a, uh, bond issuance to take care of that.
All right, so in, in Woodway, kinda jumped out in front, I apologize, I wasn't here for that meeting. So Woodway kinda jumped ahead of a lot of other projects?
Way and Bridle Ridge.
And Bridle Ridge.
Because of the, uh, you know, the rapidly declining street conditions out there following all the heavy rainfall.
And, and Mr. Alvarez, since you weren't here, we did explain to council, in order to do Woodway and Bridle Ridge, we would have to come back with a tax rate increase. We knew at that time, we were probably gonna have to ask for a tax rate increase to pay for those. Debt service side.
Well, I just, you know, it bothers me to see projects like that just jump ahead of a lot of other projects that have been waiting. But I wasn't here to, to voice that, and I apologize for not being here.
I don't know if jump ahead is the word I would use, but, I mean, I, I respect you saying that, I just, it's just a failure.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
The failure is just so rapid. Was that the night you brought the subgrade in plastic bags and we passed it around that night? Or was that another night? I don't know if Mr. Alvarez was here for that.
That was a previous time.
Previous time.
That was a while back. No, I recognize.
We evaluate our CIP so often.
Yeah, I recognize that, but also recognize that we have a lot of other streets, you know, that are probably worse, that could use attention. And, but yet, you know, all of a sudden, some, some subdivisions seem to have moved ahead rather quickly.
What are these, when you, okay, I won't qualify when you say worse, or, or I don't know what these are on our street inventory. What's the situation there?
And, of course, the last time they were evaluated was prior, was right after the, uh, the, uh, seal coat was done and the level up had been applied, and so they graded real high, a ninety-seven at the time, because it was right after, after they had been redone. Then after we've gotten the rain, though, they have deteriorated. For instance, Vista del Sol was the next, uh, scheduled project, and the street rating for Vista del Sol was a seven, was a seventy-four in twenty fifteen. Although we have not been out back yet to, uh, regrade Woodway and Bridle Ridge, because we're doing the twenty sixteen inventory right now as we speak, I can tell you that the streets in Woodway and Bridle Ridge will grade lower than a seventy-four, lower than Vista del Sol. So we've just seen this rapid, rapid decline in the quality of the roadway.
Now, you have no utility work to do? No pipes?
No utilities.
Like, Tanglewood might be argued that it's worse, but you have eight million dollars worth of water and sewer to do first.
Absolutely.
Right?
When we're talking about, when we're talking about, uh, that category of road reconstruction projects that do not require utilities.
Right.
But Tanglewood has been waiting how long? It's been on the books for how long?
Number of years.
We'll start utilities in Tanglewood in twenty twenty-one, and then a couple.
But it's been waiting, we've known it's been a problem over there for how many years?
A number of years.
For a long time.
It's eight point five million.
That's my point, it just, I just, I'm a little disappointed that sometimes we see this activity, this, where other projects take priority the way they do, when others have been waiting and waiting and waiting.
It's, it's, it's my opinion, and, uh, based on listening to the engineers, that the rapid failure in those subdivisions is, is so rapid right now that we, we need to get in there and do it, so. And, and there's no doubt, there's, I, there's some other streets that have failures too, but, um, you know, Tanglewood would probably, we'd probably have that conversation if we didn't have to do the utilities in Tangle. And that's why we think the level up in Tanglewood would, will help that drive, um, driving surface condition a little bit to get us through to when we have to tear the utilities up. So, and that's why we're proposing that this year.
Thank you. Okay. Basically, last comment on this slide. The difference of one point three nine is basically because of the new debt. I think the last comment would be, last year, we were above the effective tax rate by point five nine. This year, without the debt, we'd be below that, but it is what it is, this, these are the facts, okay? Any questions, any comments, before I move forward? And basically, I mean, another guy. And basically, I mean, another, I lie, I always lie, I guess. Pay program was not included because we tried to keep it within the level. And the only thing we accepted is the hundred thousand dollars new program and the new debt.
I would just add that, you know, your graph with the eighteen years of sales tax data, there's a number of years there, right about the time I got on council, oh four through oh, oh seven perhaps. You know, there's a nice, healthy gap between budgeted and actual. And, and, you know, I want to remind everybody, we took that opportunity to take our general fund ending balance from fifteen percent to twenty five percent because as, as this sales tax, and I've said that before, I know, but I think it can't be said enough, as the reliance on sales tax increases, we also obviously recognize it's subject to going down, so we need more in the savings account, which is what we've done. So, that goes back to what Ms. Garrett said when we started this discussion yesterday about us being in health, reasonably good health overall. So, I just wanted to point that out.
I'm glad you pointed that out. It's a good, good observation, and we made sure back then that any usage of that money besides increasing the fund balance was towards a one-time expense. We didn't want to pledge that money towards recurring because back then, we sure, we knew this thing was not gonna happen, continue to happen all these years. Okay. Thank you for that. Okay, the next slide, I'm not gonna spend much time, basically. Well, one minute or so. Fifty eight point seven six, of course, I'm still saying as of today. MNO will take thirty two eighty five, debt twenty one point nine one. As you can see, the ratio, fifty six percent's MNO, forty percent is debt. If it wasn't for the fact that within six, seven years from now, our debt will be dropping drastically. I'm talking drastically, it's be dropping fast. I'm comfortable. Usually, I don't like to see more than one-third, you know, above the thirty percent, but the reason why it's forty four, of course, we have that one point, that seven point two million dollar in there. But I want to make sure, just for the public purpose, I know we all have discussions about debt and all this and everything else. I'm aware that it's high, but to offset that is that within five, six, 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 seven years, your debt service is gonna drop. It's gonna wipe out that increase fast. That's the reason I'm kinda comfortable right now with that seven point two. Only reason. In addition, in order to figure out, maybe some people would like to know where their tax dollars are going on the, and what services they pay for, there's a graph. Public services get about fifty six percent of the MNO tax. Public Works get about nineteen percent. Parks and Rec gets about six point seven percent. General Administration Services get about six point eight percent. Development Services, four point eight. Library, four point six. And non-departmental, two point one percent of the MNO tax, as it stands today. Uh, now, this is the same, same information, but on the pie charts, I'm gonna pass through it. I'm not gonna stay much time. I did throw this in here. I thought it'd be interesting to find out, okay, you know, we, we service sixty four thousand two hundred fifty nine individuals that live in Victoria, who live here, or population. I'm not talking about the daytime population because I know it's over a hundred seventeen thousand each. That, that's a given. But I was wondering, okay, what does it cost? I know, maybe some homeowners pay more than others, but I was trying to get to a point, per citizen, what does it cost a city to service sixty four thousand citizens? I just thought it was interesting, you know, on public safety, it costs a dollar fifteen per capita per day. Public Works, thirty nine cents per capita per day. Parks, fourteen cents per capita per day. Administration, legal, finance, city management, fourteen cents. Development Services, ten cents. Library, nine. Anyway, I just thought that was interesting. Non-departmental is, is point zero five. Some people will say, hey, whatever, I still pay so much taxes, okay. But, you know, I thought it was interesting that, you know, from, from a city standpoint, what does it cost to service those customers out there on, you know, sixty four population? Some might think, I just thought, I'm a number guy. This here, this table, I'm not gonna spend much time. Basically, I just regrouped. Here's your, here's your, the blue, that's your recurring expenses. The other columns, here's your recurring revenue. I'm just telling you how I'm matching that up, how we balance into recurring with the expenses with the revenue. That's all that slide shows you, along with the tax rate for each one. So, let me regroup and put it all together. Right now, as of today, I'm looking at about a fif, sixteen million dollar fund balance, ending balance, which will be our beginning balance for next year. If we throw in the recurring revenue, about forty eight point five million dollars, recurring expenses, about forty eight point three, add our one ti, add our new, I mean, our one-time expenses, we end up with a fund balance of about thirteen million dollars. We have a policy currently, twenty five percent of that would be reserved. That's twelve point eight. That means we have an excess fund balance right now, as of today, two hundred seventy four thousand dollars. And if you look at the revenue and expenses recurring, you got about two hundred sixty thousand dollar variance there, too. What's that for? Well, remember, throughout the whole process, we were talking about sales tax. Well, that's my backup plan, hopefully. If we, if I look at it, we're gonna drop another two hundred thousand dollars or two hundred sixty thou, two hundred seventy? That's that. If it goes to above another hundred thousand dollars, the city manager would probably propose to cut back on that new program of the mowing. Does that make sense?
The mowing.
That's our backup plan. Now, we don't have a backup plan if we hit a twenty two percent decrease in sales tax. That's where you gotta go back and start scrubbing which ones we're gonna cut back really seriously on. Does that make sense to y'all? So, we do have a Plan B. We don't have Plan C for the twenty two percent drop. But we can come up with one. Okay? Recapping, right now, proposed, fifty eight point seven six. Tax rate is greater than the effective tax rate right now due to the fact we've got new debt of seven point two million dollars for Woodway, Bridle Ridge, Saddle Brook subdivision. We continue current services without any new paid programs in there. We have one-time expenses of one, two point eight. CIP, majority of that's one point eight. And, of course, right now, as it stands today, it has a hundred thousand dollars in recurring tax stop mowing program, additional five mowing. That's all I have for tonight, folks. I know it's pretty quick, or there's gonna be other conversations. City manager's happy to take phone calls. I know she will call me. But we're gonna have other discussions.
If you didn't, we didn't do the bond debt, what would the, what would the tax rate be?
Take off one point three nine.
Minus one point three nine?
Yes, sir.
Technically, you'd be slightly...
Fifty seven, thirty seven.
Thirty seven.
I just would caution everybody on one thing, very important. We're not done. These numbers can change. Let's be very careful with that. You don't have final figures, or you don't have figures with a high enough degree certainty. When I say figures, I mean property value. We've still got a few months of sales tax collections to go. And we're not through. We don't have a draft budget in our hands. That won't be for another six weeks.
August second.
Eight weeks, six weeks, so...
Well, I'm glad you brought that up too, because if a scenario plays out where, you know, for some reason, we do hit that budget projection, I still recommend to keep that two hundred thousand dollar excess as a cushion because you still got July's, which collects in August, August and September collections. Something still can happen there.
Well, the uncertainty is probably increasing. So, I, I, I understand. You know, and these, these are the why that, it's easy to see the sales tax exceeds our property tax collections, why we engage as a company like the Retail Coach to go out and, you know, it's an investment in the health of that seventeen million dollars, the sales tax, eighteen million dollars. So, very good. Is, this is the last presentation?
Yes, this is it, and this...
Counsel, it's a good time. Y'all have any other?
Well, I'd just like to emphasize, I know you broke out, broke out the property tax rate and where that money goes, but if you're projecting fifteen point one million, that would barely pay for either the police or the fire department if you just had to use that, the property tax for just one.
Absolutely, but there's one-time expenses.
There's so many other sources that come into effect. So, that's always been my point about folks talking about their property taxes. Man, it's barely paying either for the police or the fire if you just took that bulk and applied it to one of those departments.
Another way to say it, that line I would say, one-time expenses, that's the variable. Yeah, if it doesn't come in, we, we won't have that high budget. So... That's why it's important for us, from staff level, we need to dissect, go back to square one. How does it compare? What is our baseline we're talking about? And then slowly build that structure into the budget so we can justify things.
And I'd asked before, and I still would like to ask again whether council's interested, I don't know, but to see a one percent and a two and a three pay increase and what those numbers would look like. I'd like to at least, and how they would impact the tax rate.
Do you want me to show some numbers?
So, you want us to, you want us to show us an increase in the MNO side of the tax rate in order to fund a pay program?
A one percent, or a two, or three, just to look at it at least.
Do you have that handy? Okay, go ahead.
I may not.
Okay, you're good.
Being counter counsel parent.
I know, go ahead.
Did you anticipate that?
No, no.
Well, only because I'm kinda concerned what the insurers is gonna do too, to us.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
We're waiting on that.
It's a very valid concern.
Let me translate what you're seeing up to that table. The first table is like, if we go with the three and a half percent pay program, which Cheryl was mentioning, for the step program for PD and Fire, we're looking at about four hundred thousand dollars. If you go with the three percent, I'm not saying it's gonna be a three, but that's just the baseline. It's about half a million dollars. So, you look at nine hundred thousand dollars, of course, on the far-hand ride, it's a tax effect. So, I decided, okay, what's one-third of that? So, the one-third of PD and Fire, it'd be about one point seven. The cost is about a hundred and fourteen thousand, a tax rate point three one, as it stands today with its values. For general fund staff, there's the number, and there's the effect on the tax rate. And the last one down there is two-thirds of the cost. There's still some misogynist in you, but that's in the range. That's just strictly no marketing, no nothing, no added staff. Just a step and a, for other people's pay program.
Can you send us that since it's not in the presentation?
No, it was not intended to be in the presentation.
Well, because, you know...
But yes, we can send it to you.
I was looking for direction of answer on that one.
Oh, sure, sure.
For my clarification, the step program is police and fire, and it's in addition to, because they are employees too. It's in addition to any across-the-board raise.
No, no, that's their, that's their program.
It's a separate program.
City builds a program strictly for the Fire and PD, and then the other staff have a different program themselves.
So, it is possible to have a step program raise, and, and it's also possible to do a three percent across the board.
It's possible to do anything council wants.
That would include police if we wanted, but the step program is a separate program designed for them.
That's correct.
It's in lieu of, and it's non-supervisory people in the police and fire. So, it's in lieu of the traditional across-the-board or pay program.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any further questions for Mr. Gilbert? Seeing none, Ms. City Manager, we have any further business?
No, but I would encourage you over the next month, you know, you kind of see what the basics of our budget is that we've put together and proposed. If you, you know, review, if you have questions, because when we come back August two with the budget, it doesn't take too many weeks to get into. We've got to have and publish an effective tax rate and, and a tax rate, a proposed tax rate. And Gilbert, I don't know that date, but it happens pretty rapidly after that. It may be the middle of August, we've got to publish.
The following week, something like that.
Following week, okay.
Following week, something like that.
So, the following week, we've got, so, we can either, you know, if you wish, maybe the second meeting in Ju, July, we can have some more conversation about the tax rate. We will have the, we will not have the certified numbers by then, but we could still have the conversation and kind of get a feel for what you're thinking on the tax rate. Because come Jan, August second, we're gonna have to, you're, we're gonna have to lock in on tax rate. Once we lock in on that tax rate, it, it's relatively easily to come down off of what's published. It, you have to start your whole process over again if you want to exceed what was published.
Yeah.
So...
Which is state law, and those dates are set, and we have to...
And when do you need the trigger for the bond, to go to the bond market?
Okay, um, I'm going on the assumption that we, we got plenty of time to answer the question, but on August second, I'm gonna bring a resolution to, to publish notice that, you know, the city has intent to issue bonds where it gives the citizens opportunity to come to council or speech or do whatever they want to do. But in the second meeting in September, it'll be a Thursday. I can't remember, you remember?
Thirteen.
The ninth, I believe.
Oh, no.
I'm gonna ask council one more time like I did last year. Is it a go or no-go on the bonds? That'd be the last drop date that I can, if I'm gonna sell bonds now. If you still want to sell bonds, that's fine, but if you want to, now we decide not, no harm done, I won't sell any bonds, it goes away. But what's caused a problem if that following Monday, I go to market and then you come back, now I'm not gonna pass the tax rate. I say, whoa, wait a minute. It can happen. We can, but it's a black eye. It's like going to bank, now, you know, it doesn't work that way usually, but that's why I...
We'll have a decision.
That's why, I, I'm confident you will, but I'm gonna make sure, answering Mr. Alvarez's...
Well, it's for the benefit of whoever's gonna replace me, it's gonna be their vote.
That day will be, thanks, September ninth, but we're gonna hand out a calendar. That's the drop date to make sure we're still on with the bonds.
And, and just as a reminder, in, in your read file, probably the time before, there were, you know, we've given you the budget, additional budget work dates. You got that again, so hopefully, everybody's got that calendar and you've got those August and September because there's some, I think there's three, you know, non-traditional Tuesday dates. Okay, so everybody's good with that? Okay, very good. I appreciate your attention. I know this is, makes some long evenings back to back, but thank you very much. And call if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gilbert.
We're adjourned.